We're going to call this board study session to order. We'll start with a board member roll call. Can I work up?
Here.
Heidi Winarmio.
Here.
Grace Lehman.
Here.
And Marissa Pulsarabiz is here. We'll start with elementary and literacy demonstration. Elementary.
Oh, my God.
Early, too.
So, full disclosure, Stephanie sent me these videos. And like, two weeks later, I said, I haven't sent you the board, like I said I was going to. But then we started looking at it, have a conversation, I was like, you know what? I want to show these to the board, so you can turn it up here. And I think there's a slide.
Yeah, so I mentioned this at the last board meeting, just to kind of go quickly. But basically, we had that summer learning practice this year. This year, we really got to kind of expand our summer school. And so, we had Carrie Cowan from Organ Response Intervention. She's been coming to our district and working with our teachers at Level Number 12 on 11th Street. And it was like, hey, and she loves S-4A, and she was like, hey, can I come and work for you for summer school? It would be amazing. So she has a place on the coast that she has for the summer. And she came, and she knows Dr. Anita Archer because of her work that she does with Organ RTI and the ESD. And Dr. Archer is very well-known in the line of literacy. She's a researcher, a literacy expert, and she's the author of the curriculum that we use in the district for our interventions. Phonics for Reading and Rewards are two that we use that she's worked on. And then she also has other books like This book for instruction. And so, our teachers in our district have gone to see her trainings through the ESD. We set up a large group last year. And so, it was really interesting that she created this video for our students, because she's just so well-known. And so, Carrie had contacted her and said, hey, I'm teaching summer school, I have this great group of fifth-grade students. And so, then, the video that you'll see first is the video that Dr. Archer made for the students. And then, she asked the students, can you please send me a video of you reading? And so, the second video is then, after they practiced for a while, sending her a video of them reading. So, the first one, if you want to go to the next slide or second, is her speaking to them.
Good morning. My name is Anita Archer, and you might already know my name because it's on your Phonics for Reading books. And I'm here to say hallelujah to you who are working so hard as fifth graders because you're going to soon be in middle school on your reading. And I wish I could listen to you read. Maybe your teacher, Carrie, who I know very well, will send me a video of each of you reading. I'd love that. So, hi, Michael. Hi, Edith. And Leo now. Hi to you, too. So I hear you are in Book C. Whoa, Book C. I don't know how many longer you're going to work with Carrie. And you probably cover a teacher name, she's my friend, though. But I could see you really working on fluency, having the ability to read with ease, so you can read more. Now, how many more days do you have of instruction? I would bet that you have a few. So you're going to be working on fluency, that smooth reading with ease. You're working on multi-syllabic words, really long words. But if the time gets short, what I would do is work on fluency with the 10 passages at the end, because I think you'll find them really interesting at the end of your book. So maybe you'll send me a little video, so that I can listen to you read. So take good care. And Dr. Archer just applauds you and thinks that you are terrific for using part of your summer to become a better reader before you're in middle school. Take care. Bye-bye.
Ready? Yes. So, so the district's paper.
Some adults who work on movies began the youth cinema project for kids. The project goal was to help kids produce movies. The adults coached the kids on a staff in the production of a film.
Reader was writing very after it just kind of wrote, and so then she wanted us to...
Here is Edith and Michael reading Saving Sea Turtle Eggs.
Sea turtle eggs are reptiles that spend most of their time in the ocean.
During nesting season, sea turtles come ashore on beaches to dig holes, lay eggs, and cover them with sand.
Then the sea turtles return to the ocean.
Eventually, the eggs hatch, and the baby sea turtles make their way from the beach into the ocean.
But sometimes those eggs never get the chance to hatch.
That's because people called poachers steal the eggs from the nest to sell as food.
Purchasing sea turtle eggs from nests is illegal because sea turtles are endangered.
Nice job, guys. That was excellent. Want to say anything to Dr. Archer?
Hi.
Hi.
Can you wave? Great reading, guys.
And so, I just wanted, I just thought it'd be great to share with you and show how much growth the kids can really make, and just thank you so much.
Good example.
We think I've done the strategic plan, and they keep school for the goal calendar.
Yeah, so we had sent something out early in the summer about what the indicator brought to the board. We have two kinds of indicators. Primary indicators, which will be shown tonight, and the secondary indicators, which are more geared towards each of the buildings. And so, we don't have any on that, but I'll show the primary indicators tonight. One of the other things we did when we reviewed our strategic plan last year was to create school improvement calls directly related to the strategic plan. And so, all the calendar does is show when, like, November and December is when all the schools during the study session will bring their school improvement plan goals to the board to review. And then, in January, or in February, we will look at indicators again, and then we wait until June, and then we'll go over all of the goals again, including how they did on them with the indicators. And then, we'll also look at the district strategic plan indicators. So sort of a roadmap on how to connect the schools to our strategic plan. So I just, there's really no action reading, there's just sort of, and the administrators helped me with, especially the bottom part, as to when they would be done and ready for indicators. So that's all I have to do.
There's a question about the way that the demographics are. So is the, like, could the ELL also be a sped student?
Yeah, so are we on the next section?
What, at the next item we're working on?
Oh. It's okay. I'm sorry.
Which brings us to the summer school district strategic plan indicators.
They're such like a white page.
Oh.
Grace, can you ask a question again? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No. So are the ELL students, could they also be, like, if they're crossover?
Hispanic, Hispanic and ELL.
No, like, ELL and sped. You do have some...
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
And so, those kids could be represented in both groups on this, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. The same way it could be for our Hispanic kids that are ELL.
Yeah.
Is there a distinction on that step around this process? Is there a distinction between kids and ELL? Have they had to graduate out of ELL?
So, ELL means that they are currently receiving EOD services. Hispanic students are just students that are qualified as Hispanic, but they're not necessarily level one or active ELLs. They could be, but they're modest.
As I can share with you, one of the good things, I look at this one, this first one has 80% of third graders. We'll be on watch, our benchmark is shown by the Star Reading at the end of the year. Our goal, really, and we'd like to get 100%, obviously, but if we can get anything over 80% total, that's a good thing. That's like our tier one, the one all the kids at 80%. So that's a good number, although I look down and see ELL, sped, pretty good for sped and Hispanic. And then, we'd like those to be higher, but anytime we get anybody at level 80%, it's a good thing. So this is a good chart for us, especially.
It's concerning, though, that the only demographic that's above 80% is the males.
Yeah. And there's more of them, too. I had that conversation with Stephanie the other day, didn't I? Yeah, it's like, did this work? And, yeah.
It's interesting that it works.
Yeah, 80%.
Well, we are seeing growth, as you can look across ELL. And we're showing a lot of growth in the, in each of the demographics. Most of them are showing significant growth. Well, we've done a little bit of...
Now, when you get the secondary, these are primary indicators. So we need secondary indicators for the schools will be more specific to the schools. This is just like, we picked, as part of this process, four or five secondary indicators, saying, as a district, we'll keep an eye on these, but each school has its own. So the next one that is...
Can I ask a, sorry?
Go ahead.
Ask a question. So with the reading, speaking of sped, and is our Science of Reading curriculum being used with special education?
Yes.
Okay. And is that all the way through 12th grade?
They are, they have all been, or it's been provided for national learning on course of the GIC. All the different curriculums that are available for reading based on the Science of Reading. We did get some new curriculum through summer school funding for Lucy Clark. I know it's being used with, at the middle school, I think it's pretty much across the board, yes. I can't say for every single student, every single special classroom, but in the general...
Okay. So there is Science of Reading curriculum available.
For everybody.
For special education.
Kind of a variety, too. If something's not working, and they have options for, for getting that might work, that's a good choice. And then, we also do that office.
I just didn't know right back we got blood doctors when we got the curriculum. It was like, we would get it the next year, and then funding, and like, just wanted to make sure that it's all...
We've been slowly over time, like, we're like, some school funding, let's get another, you know? So we've been slowly adding, so that we have a variety of options out.
So is that something, sorry, that has to be implemented? Kind of, I just remember when Science of Reading was first implemented, like at ASPER, and kind of needing to remove some of the other less effective things. So is that something still that you're like with special education? Like, you know, you get comfortable with letting you know, and so you keep using that? All right. I guess being explicitly given, like, direction, this is, you need to use.
Well, I think it can get kind of tricky with, especially just with instruction reading. I think that case managers need to have training in the Science of Reading and access to tools. But at the end of the day, it's up to the case manager to determine what that's specially designed, what the student needs, what gaps they're missing, and to address it individually. Because it's an IED, it's an individual or a patient plan. So there's not, I don't know that it's appropriate to say all sped classes are going to use this curriculum, because then that ends so long, your specially designed...
Right. Are you just like, just saying, are they just saying, Science of Reading? First is, does that make sense?
I think it's...
Because that's not as...
I think there are things available and training that has happened, but I think at some point, it breaks down and becomes an individual specially designed.
You have a vote?
Yes, and I'm...
No.
I'm just, okay, I'm, I'm looking at, so special education, the statistics are 85% of the students having dyslexia. And so, they need the instruction that is aligned with the Science of Reading to make progress. And so, yeah, maybe, I can understand, like, not a specific curriculum, like, you're going A, B, you know, this step and this step, because they might have different goals or whatever, but addressing those goals, are they using the Science of Reading? Do you see what I'm saying? First is, I don't know if you can entertain or whatever.
I think it's a more complicated answer than that. I think that, I would probably need to look and maybe report out to you what is being used and what is available. But I don't feel like I can sit here tonight and say yes, 100%, because I also think that it's based on the student's strengths, needs, and what the data shows a substudent needs, and it's in particular structure.
Right.
So I don't know how to...
From, right, from my perspective, not that I work in this district, but I would see, I would see, I would assume, Science of Reading is the district's curriculum, so everyone has access because it's the district's curriculum. And then, IDPs are based on what that student specifically needs. So if they are dyslexic and they need those specific things, they probably supplement it with that. But some kids only have a new comprehension, and that's different. Some kids only have math, and that's different. So like, these sped numbers are not, not all those kids have reading in their IED, right? So...
Yes. So the question is more to the fidelity of the reading aspect that I don't think is... Yeah.
Well, the fidelity of the reading aspect, just from one indicator, is on that first indicator, and that's only third grade. We haven't looked at different grades, but that's when you say, like, 81%, that's a fidelity indicator. That 80% of our kids are actually at grade level in the fourth grade or the fifth. That's a fidelity. No, that's, again, that's just third grade, it doesn't break it down by each group.
Yeah. So thanks.
Yeah.
Sorry, but yeah, that's a lot.
Can I just know more then?
Yeah.
Based on the Star Reading assessment? And so, it doesn't, that's, it's not just like typical, which would be like, next year and stuff, it is a mix of, I think it's different, or I think it's readers, they have the comprehension, like, you have to encompass this, all of it. So that may be, you know, where you're seeing a bit of the...
Yeah.
And just to touch on that also, one of the reasons why we use Star as an indicator is because we can assess a kid at any time we want using Star. Stay where assessments only come one time, and you don't really get the feedback you need in the time we matter to look at him doing the changes, and so...
And some students opt out. And some students opt out.
More than ever now. Yeah. Yeah, good point. Okay. The next indicator is the ninth grade on track, and that was for last year, was 94.96. And Mr. Jackson, that was this year's sophomore, correct?
This year's sophomores, you're at 94%.
When they got done with their freshman year.
Correct. Our biggest challenge is, is the influx that we usually have students who will be in from the districts. That, we'll see that maybe as soon as we start for sophomore year, but when we wrapped up last year's year, we were at 95% possibly.
Okay. And we didn't check ELL because there wasn't enough kids, is that correct?
Because less than 10 students, they typically don't report down numbers.
Yeah.
Those would be, yeah, trying to get these students. Quite a few of those are in government for our district, so it's just, they're just taking them longer to get the afternoon time to read.
The next point is the, under also, primary indicator for instructional development is a graduation rate for four years, and this information is not available to us until December. Mr. Jackson, do you have an idea what it might be from your figure?
From our figure, we had one last graduate, like, on August 28th, that comes to 72. I think 95.1%. That is from what we have done. Mr. Vessaville and Ms. Jones will cross-reference all of that data on one final report that usually is due first week of November, plus the release of the final operating December. I do not know what the sub-group's lower tail, so the average number was in the mid-90s is what we're hoping for.
That's awesome. And we get on the report, it's a 95%. Is that right with the state?
I don't think the graduation rate is taken due to that. Maybe they do that.
I thought that occurred somewhere.
There are very few schools that do that.
So what's the case for the ninth grade on track?
It was, a year ago, when we were at 97.5%, they did not tell us the subcategory was because it was identified.
The next indicator is, is part of our COVID Series Two workforce. And there's a, there's three total indicators under workforce, a couple of them are secondaries, I didn't bring them, but our main one is, is that 85% of our staff at district will be retained. And based on last year's, this year, we retain 91% of our staff members. From, it got started August 20, we had some resignations, like, right before staff got back, so we had to, like, figure out if we included them, but it's only 91%. It's a good number. So feel good about that. Like I said, there's a couple of other indicators we're looking at from there. This is the one that, the last one's the one that concerns me, and then I read some articles today about attendance that we're not even, the state average is around 73% for chronically, not chronically absent. We're one at all of 85%, and last year, across all grade levels, was a total of 67%. So that's an area, as you can tell, we had done better the year before, dipped the year before that. So I know that, like, next week, I start my weekly administrator meetings individually, and two items on our agenda that I shared with them is, we're going to talk about attendance and chronic absence attendance, and done some work on reports that they have that can show this. And I'm actually going out next week with some of our engagement people to knock on some doors, had a conversation with one of them today. So, but we're starting to see, second weekend, we start to see some trans, some same kids not attending school, so we're going to try to, early on, but that's a concern, but it's not because of lack of effort. I think, we didn't have some resources in place last year, but I figured out this summer we need to have some resources in place. So each school has an attendance plan that I'm going to review with them next week, and we'll go from there. The total, and this is, but we are about eight, seven, eight percentage points below where the state average is. And if the administrator wants to talk about that, I'll...
Or one of the issues that is new in education, some of these issues have been around for a long time, but one of the new ones that we are having, and maybe Mr. Will can discuss this point, is that as Google classrooms have become more effective and efficient, students can skip the class, logging into the Google classroom, and basically take it as a correspondence class, and still stay up to their homework completion and grading. But as I stated in my Welcome Back letter, that does not replace group discussion and collaborative work in terms of your educational model, and thus, please encourage your child to come to school. Thoughts on that, Mr. Wood?
I'd have to agree with my experience, especially with some of the teachers I have. They post notes for what they'll be covering in class. You can usually just either write it down and go back at home, or just turn it in on the classroom right there. So it's, it's a good thing that you can obviously catch up, and it's also, I'm taking advantage of it.
So it's going to rate help students who are gone for prolonged periods of time because of illness, et cetera, so they can stay up to speed with their courses, but at the same time, it provides less incentive to be in class. It's not widely common that I kind of say it's a mitigated percentage of things that we have experienced pre-impoundment.
That's all I have for indicators. There's some more additional attendance, but we're doing the work.
All right, I'll move on to the next item, which is policy regarding personal electronic devices.
Yeah, so a couple of things on this. I did a presentation last month, PowerPoint presentation on personal electronic devices and the new requirements based on the Governor's Executive Order. And then, this is the policy that OSBA put out based on that. In addition to tonight, at the study session, you'll have our first reading of this tonight, and then a second reading in October, because by law, you have to have passed the policy by October 31st. So unless you want to have a special reading based on this. I can tell you that myself and high school administrators, and Linda was on there, too, I think, we spent quite a bit of time on this policy. I can tell you, everything that's in here is in the executive order. There's nothing that we've added. There were bracket items that we had to make decisions on. A very simple one was, like, they have bracket items if you use the pouches. So like, you could put in there, like, you're going to help with the pouch as well. We took that bracket items out because we're gone. But everything else in there, like, we, when we reviewed it, we had the executive order sitting, I did, I had the executive order sitting right next to me, and the policy sitting over here. So anytime they question something, I'm telling the executive order and saying, look, it is the executive order, it has to be this way. So, I don't, I don't know. Linda, Linda, you have anything on this?
I mean, with our conversation, um, to know is the ability to appeal for an exception. Not sure how that's going to play out. Most of our students that leave an exception have either a medical 504, or it's part of an individual plan. And looking at the criteria for an exception, it'll just be interesting to see how it plays out, how many people request that. We do have the discretion to say no or say if it's appropriate, it's just something I have experience.
Is there like a form that...
That's the, all right. So what he, what Ms. Breck is referring to, on the first page of the policy is number three, a written exemption provided for students based on requests received on the AR form. To administration will respond to requests within 10 days. When we, or when the high school and middle school and all the district created their plans for electronic devices this past year, this wasn't even in consideration, like, there was no opportunity for an appeal. But the executive order, it's order, we have to provide that opportunity for appeal, and it does not have to be proposed by a doctor, or it can just be a barracks, and I want access to it. So we work, and then they can appeal it directly to the superintendent, I think, the way it stays in the policy. So we just see unknown, like, we don't know how many people are going to try to use that, but we've also had conversations around consistency. If we're doing it for emergency reasons, can't do it for every kid, there might be some mental health issues around it, things like that, but we just don't know how we're going to respond to that, if they've ever done that.
Do they have to fill out the form if they do have it on their IED or their, no, it's just automatic?
Part of their combinations. IEDs are by the force.
I'm guessing that's the issue on the first part of the policy, that if it's part of an IED or part of a 504, this is not...
I should...
There's one of those somewhere, you know?
Yeah. But also, like, I don't, I don't know how many kids we have on this, but, oh, we would, like, there are kids who are, could be diabetic, they use their phone to check their, but they may not necessarily have an IED or 504. So the number one on that first page also states, a student's medical provider's order for the care and treatment of a bound for condition now. That might be like, for diabetes, that allows them to turn their phone on to check their, to check their, but, but doesn't mean they have their phone on all the time. So I think some of the exemptions, like on number three on the first page, that administrators will get, might be like, for that purposes, maybe not diabetic, but could be mental health. But also, though, like, spent time in the middle school, there's kids who come down and use the phone in the office, and we do that at ASPR and Lucy Clark, so there's ways to use the phone without a kid having had a sophomore. Mr. Jackson, do you want to...
Actually, Mr. Webber, I'm discussing this yesterday morning a little bit about, we feel, I feel, and I think others do, that we found these solutions last year. Data that we have this year, today we completed, what, our eighth day of school, no, seventh day, this was our seventh day at school, we have collected two phones and one set of earphones. And so, we feel like it's been successful, and we implement it. I do have some concerns about running this to 8 o'clock until 3:15 in the afternoon, and they don't completely implement that. The only real significant... The only real significant change in this is the scope of the day, which means lunch passing periods and Netflix time that we have on that Thursday morning. But it also means that our students will not be able to have it on their person. Like they can't have it in their pocket. They have to have it stowed in a backpack or in their locker with their car. So that's gonna be a significant change. The middle school already has that in place. So there could be some hiccups with that.
That's part of the executive order also.
Which is in line with the mental health. If you have it on your person and it's causing, it's causing the same response as it would be if you kind of had that. So that makes sense, it's gonna be just a behavior related to what we happen with.
I think the challenge from the high school, to be honest with you, from what I see is that Mr. Jackson, Mr. Madison walk through the cafeteria at lunchtime. And you got sixty kids who have their phones on, how do you release that without walking by and ignoring it, visiting the door? And you think they're very ignored during class. That and the fact that coming from the state, it's inequitable, a kid to leave campus for lunch and turn their phone off. So how is, and if a kid can't afford to leave campus, then how is that fair to that kid? And that, that's part of the sort of problem.
And there, there are young adults on the high school campus that hold jobs and have connection with employers and connection schedules and so forth. It's gonna be a challenge in them navigating those types of things. So we are working forward. This is kind of stealing some thunder from what I'll discuss in my previous presentation later this evening. But we are establishing an principals executive committee to hear feedback from students on how we can protect the people themselves. And we'll start that discussion in the on the twenty-fourth.
Has there been communication with the students yet about it?
They are aware of the timeline, of the board's proposal being adopted on the thirty-first. Or also support the policy, words of policy being adopted. The superintendent. On the thirty-first, they are aware that it will be implemented coming back from lunch break. They do not know all the particulars of what that may be because that policy has not been officially adopted yet. So we're still waiting for further direction. But they are aware that there are changes coming, here to discuss and at least in my advisory and others as part of our introductory lessons.
Are you allowed to have a phone zone like near the office or something? Like for students who are checking their phone for work or something like that? Is that allowed?
According to the executive order, no. Anytime they are under the hours of supervision, they are not have access to their phones. Except to the buses. As I said, we did what we did last year because there are other principal's that are, if you really deep run some in the dealer right now.
And I was like, he's like, when he says that, I was in meetings with someone, it first came out and they were like, they were pale. They were panicking, they're like, it's really not that big a deal, it's a little bit of a change, but it's okay. They didn't believe us.
But that might be even case where an exception is appropriate if the child or the parent itself offered to send it to the district. So instead of, they have to have an exception to check their phone between twelve and twelve-thirty or within two minutes. That might be where a tool like that is helpful.
Right.
You don't pay if you put your straits on those exceptions.
And that's what I was thinking too, right? As I've been pondering this, I can find some more comfort in the fact that I may not approve their request or exemption as proposed, but I can say, I will allow you access to your phone using your phone between twelve, twelve-thirty. Please check your phone in the main office. Something of that nature.
I have faith that they will do very good. I think we were really scared too when the first policy came out and we were all pretty surprised by our students. I have faith that they will do good. And then it's just for the three last years of, you know, sophomore through seniors. Because from there, the rest have never had access to their phone last year. So there is no difference for them, hopefully.
Just a blanket exemption for everybody at lunchtime?
Could I ask, that's a, put him on the spot, could I ask Quinn what he thinks of this?
Um, I think the policy we have last year, it worked way better than I thought it would have with students responding after the first couple of weeks. And then hearing this, um, I'm interested to see how it works and like, cause the parking lot's like part of school space. I'm wondering what will happen if they go to lunch and go on their phone in their vehicle? Are they gonna lease that, I guess, or like a better term?
Video camera.
We have the same, thinking the same.
You take your phone and walk over to the park.
Can't get it. Do you have any questions on the policy itself? It's, there wasn't a lot of changes at all, just because it was in line with the executive order. Just a few like we didn't, we're not using pouches like that for now. Once the board approves it by October thirty-first, that part of the requirement, we will, at the district level, start some communication out that will trickle down to the schools.
I just, one thing about the backpack again, I do have a concern about those kind of, every, what the child doesn't have backpacks. So have we pondered the, the little screen, the draw screen? Backpacks being, that's something to be explored, it was still, you have to unsell, buy those.
You know, we talked about, do you have any empty lockers to give a kid a locker to finish? I don't know, we do it all.
Are there a lot of kids who come to high school without a backpack?
Use their, they use their cars as their.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know hardly any, you just look very straight, like it seems like.
Beyond the pressure here, it's great.
I am curious about just on like, I don't know if it was intentional or not, but just that I know it says that personal electronic devices can be used when students are not on a school ground. I don't know if you need to define that better. I don't know.
I struggle with that too, because when we were reading about it, I actually asked them to define that for me. Cause I don't know if it's a well-written statement or I'm just not understanding very well.
It's like, in my mind, your car may be parked on the school grounds, but the car is like my individual property. So it's technically not the school's property.
The sidewalk, the school's school property? Yeah, I go on the sidewalk. Where's the boundary? I don't know, I just feel like, I feel like kids protest that, like.
That's maybe supposed to be have, slippery slope that is hard to track.
Yeah. Anyway.
They're lined up on the side.
Yeah, they're.
You know, that's a lot of frustration, so if you're gonna drive with your own school property, just like.
Well, given their experience at middle school, because we took them much for our stance. Um, and it, it's virtually an honor. We had left out, we assumed that was what they brand new student that wasn't with us last year. But it becomes a situation where you have to, you know, when I think about lunch hour, if a child is on their lunch and they are in their car, that's their personal property. Is that impacting their learning? Do I want to use my school resources to go around and check cars?
Right.
Right? So you have to kind of evaluate the situation. Now, a child is out there on their phone doing something that would fall under like the harassment and bullying. That's a separate issue. Does that make sense? And so it's kind of putting it through that filter of, is this impacting learning? Is this, um, you know, sucking all of our, I can just imagine Mr. Jackson and Mr. Madison out there, you know? That's how I. And yet it's not, it's easy for me to say, given that I won't have that to, yeah.
My watch, yeah. Well, and I feel like, I mean, you could argue the same thing as if they were in the cafeteria and checking their phone, is that impacting learning? But so the point like that, I mean, in my mind, I think, yeah, anyway, that.
I don't disagree, but.
I think you have to do it, the acting social skills. Well, no, I know, and I, and I feel like, like if we're, anyway, I feel like that is, it does impact. If I go to my car and I'm checking social media and I see something at lunch and then I have to, like, that's distraught, like makes me distraught and I come back into the classroom. Like, yeah, I mean, it's the same thing as if it's happening while you're engaging in conversations on your phone in the classroom. So I don't think it, I think the idea of it is that we, you know, right or wrong, is that it should be away, like for the school day.
Um, and I agree with you. And that does present an opportunity to help kids learn, you know, when that does happen. It becomes a teachable moment. But again, I go back to the idea of what the intent is of this executive order and trying to implement it in an efficient and equitable way.
Right.
Because what about the kid that doesn't have the car? Or what about the, you know, all those kinds of layers? So it is definitely more complex at the high school level than at my level or Aster or Los Angeles.
Well, are you required to go around and police the parking lot? Or is it just if you see somebody, you know, is your time more effective building relationships with the students than? Yeah, cars, you know? But if you happen to be in the parking lot and they're using that, you know, um, like the ownership is on them.
And some of the things that like we implemented last year, implemented through all, um, RCT classes, built an extra golf holes and like ping pong tables and Lego stake, like activities for kids to engage in that maybe previously they were off their phones. And it just shifted, the culture shifted. So it's, you kind of get what you're focusing on. So it's a focus of enforcement and, you know, kind of that punitive approach versus building those relationships.
Our school lunch numbers could go down. That'd be interesting.
Because it'd be.
Our numbers went up.
But they can't leave.
No, they can't leave, but even at that, when we said no phones in the cafeteria, our lunches, David said that we have more kids eating. Which I thought I never considered. It hasn't impacted the number of kids.
Right.
And everything coming out of the governor's office when this was created, um, it impacts student learning. But the main purpose for the executive order was around mental health.
Yeah.
More, it, it impacts learning, but that's why they returned off all day or the whole day. Was for kids to concentrate on SEO, learning and not have to concentrate on their boss. That's the purpose. Which I can argue.
All right.
Okay.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Policy regarding human harassment, intimidation, bullying, 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 teen baby violence and domestic violence.
So this policy on the board met in August became a goal as to, I think the goal is to, as to the effectiveness of the policy. It wasn't like numbers and things like that, as to the effectiveness of the policy. So um, spent quite a bit of time this summer, I think we were in a hour, maybe two hour training with administrators just on this policy. And tried to like, um, simplify some things. And I think there's more questions that I need to work with administrators about because I'm trying to figure out if it's harassment or not harassment. But, and I just wanted to bring this to the board, like to show you the PowerPoint that they did the training on. And we created a new form out of it to help with. So we can just go to the PowerPoint part. It's probably like six pages and the whole PowerPoint outline is the, the policy. So go ahead, Kevin. So this, this, I'm gonna go through every slide, but this is, I didn't change any of the slides as to what the administrators received when they went through the training. Um, our strategic plan said review policy and protocols for reporting anti-hate, anti-bias and harassment for all stakeholders. So this process in priority is in line with our strategic plan. Um, we, as part of this process, individual schools need to review the harassment policy rules with all students at the beginning of this school year and review as needed. That's, was a requirement as well as education for all staff and students on anti-bullying, anti-hate, anti-bias and harassment, including cyberbullying on a yearly basis. So this was also, not in great detail like we did with administrators, also reviewed with staff before the school year started. And then I also inform, I should have had the first bullet on here, but I also informed the ministry, this is a board gold for this year, it's designed to monitor and check the effectiveness. So that's just certainly linked up to what the, the policy is. So we go to the next slide. And it's also, um, it's, this language from the policy is if students or behavior is found to be in violation of this policy, will be subject to progress and appropriate remedial action, which may include discipline up to and including expulsion. Um, it's a heavy emphasis on building principles and the superintendent responsible for ensuring the quality of implementation. It even gets to the point where any form of reported harassment is a responsibility of the building principal to begin the investigation process. That's heavy emphasis in the policy on that and the policy's fine. Next. So the next one's just, I'm not gonna go through each one of these, but the, the next six or seven slides, maybe more, these are just definitions that are within the policy. Um, so, and then this one, um, we have made it an emphasis with staff that if they, and we define what these are harassment, bullying, it's, it's a, it is a, um, it has to be reported to the principal. Um, it's, it's not like a question. I think one of the issues we've had is that kids will report things to adults, but unless administrative ability can deal with it. They're starting to deal with some stuff at the end of the year and it's like, ministry is nothing about this because it wasn't reported to them. And I don't know what we're going to staff, so kind of work on this sort of this communication chain. Um, reports can be made anonymously, they don't, they don't have to tell who, who makes the report. But if they're reporting to staff, they're, they're, um, responsible for known by district officials and companies. Um, the report says, the policy says, and I don't agree with this, but it says they must begin the investigation within five days. And I told the administrators, like, you have twenty-four hours to acknowledge you have this report. If you wait five days, this whole thing will blow up pretty quick. So you have twenty-four hours to notify whoever's reported to you that you have the information. And then you have about forty-eight hours to start investigating then. Um, because if you wait too long, it becomes really a big issue to deal with some of those. But um, principals have the overall responsibility to investigate.
Is there any reason why you don't can change that in our policy and make a difference?
Um, I would just say that there could be some extending circumstances, like if a kid doesn't come to school for three or four days. So you really can, but I, uh, as I told them, the general clear, you need to start with that twenty-four hours, at least acknowledging who's reported it or do you have the report? I wouldn't want to change it because there would be some extending circumstances you may not be able to beat. Next slide. Um, this is required. Um, the building principal or designated shall notify parents or guardians of a student who is subject to the harassment, intimidation, bullying or subject to bullying. And I even put on the slide, check the policy on page three and four. So there's a requirement, once they start the investigation at the beginning of it, they're required to notify parents. Um, and they're also required to notify parents of the kids who potentially could have been doing the harassment. And they're also required to notify parents of kids who potentially could have been doing the harassment, intimidation. There's also clauses in the policy, I don't know if I put it up there, but the administrator, building administrators use their best judgment. Sometimes it could be worse to notify a parent right away. Because kid might get overly punished at home, and he gets chance to really delve into it. So there's some language in there, the kids have a little bit of freedom, but parents do need to be notified. Also, I don't know if we've done this before, but someone makes a, a report. We have a responsibility to report back to them our findings as much as we can without breaking confidentiality. So it could be a parent, it could be a staff member who reports it. As part of the investigation process, administrators are required to go back and communicate with those people who did report it. And I may also can appeal it to me to review the information, as in the policy also, that was shared. Next slide. Let's just talk about the different training. I think we can do more with training staff, I think we will as we get going, but this just talks about training programs that were required to provide prevention-wise. One of the ones we worked on that I kept having to like review was around dating violence. And schools, middle school, high school now have posters up, correct? That came from the Department of Defense around dating violence. We made sure they have it. Next slide. We're responsible, we're responsible for an add and notice on this policy, and we do that in our employee handbook as well as our website, and I think it's in the student handbook, as well as the procedures. We checked that this summer to make sure that it was accurate. Next slide. And then I won't go through the, the next four steps are part of the AR, and they just give us like step-by-step procedures on how administration, building principals are supposed to do the investigation. I don't know, we're assuming you're able to hit that link at the bottom of that one. But if there is a form of harassment that's being investigated, there's a new report that where the, the building administrators are required to fill out, that has information about the act of harassment, who's reporting it, when it's been, those type of things. It's supposed to guide the work that the administrators do. So that's pretty much all of that. So we spent, we can go back to the slides, I think that's all the slides I'll go over. Spent quite a bit of time on this this summer, and I can tell you, maybe they could speak to, but I know middle school, high school, I've had conversations with this week about what is, they're, they're running scenarios by me as to what is harassment or not. A kid that, you know, grab versus jacket as they're walking by, and so that is harassment, so we gotta go through this whole process. So we're trying to work on, and it looks different in high school than it does in Aster, but we're trying to work through it on different instances. Jenna?
I'm just curious, like, step two, it says that you'll notify when the investigation is concluded and a decision regarding disciplinary action is warranted, is determined, like, and if they want to appeal it. But it seems like most things, you can't tell the other party like what the disciplinary action is going to be, right?
Yeah.
So how does that? Like what?
When they could appeal, if you appeal that because they want a little more information, I would probably say the same exact thing as what they heard originally. We can't share information with other kids, what happens to other kids. We can share what their policy is and what, but, and they have to trust that we follow the policy. That's why I'm asking the administrators, make sure that they're consistent with once they start dealing with it. But I can't, it's just like a voice, that we don't share with other boys, or half those other boys, can't. That's one of the hard parts about harassment, to be honest with you, is you do the investigation, but it certainly looks like nothing happened. But I can tell you, stuff does happen when we get the opportunity to investigate it. But definitely, when two kids fight, you can see the bruises. Can't see that harassment, physically, visually, that's what makes it hard. I just wanted to show the super goal, I haven't got any of those forms filled out yet that have been used as part of the investigation. It's early. Formula.
So you can tell that, you know, if they offended, sorry, you know, steps are being taken, you know, but like, they, you know, are, there's some consequences to it, we can't share that with you, but this every, like, steps are being taken, or how does that work?
That, that formula you updated has different consequences.
Yeah.
And like middle school, the high school, and first offense, second offense, that's a really used tool.
Or high.
That I use to share with the parents, so they can see, like, first offense, these are possible ramifications of second offense. And that way they know, like, okay, they don't know, maybe this is the fifth second offense or first offense, they don't know. But it's in writing, and they can see that progression. And you can say, and most people understand, we are following district protocol. Here's a template of what we use. And a policy is being followed, and so that people will look at it, they're like, oh, okay. I'm not telling them specifically what happened to the child, but they can see. So that tool is really helpful in those situations.
I thought parents tell, like, what happened to kids, I can't tell you, but look at that shoes you talked about, and that's what happened, when this happens, they're involved.
It, it's a way to assure the parent that violating the confidentiality around.
I think anything, I hope that, I think we need to do some more work, and me, me taking, I took many things from one of the staff. But I also think that hopefully they did props of awareness, district-wide, not only with students, but staff, and hopefully parents. They'll end up dealing with this lot of last week. Stuff.
It's true, you're trying to, and I appreciate the staff's diligence, but it's, you know, they're, it's a training argument, so it's French. But when you start off the sentence, if someone walks by and pulls on your jacket, is that all under this policy? Or is that just behavior that needs to be addressed? But maybe not at that level, because if you did that for all the schools to hate.
No, but again, like I said, if you have a kid that does it, it doesn't stop, and after telling them to knock it off, then it becomes harassment.
Then it does. People will sit down, talk to you, and say, hey, this is what I'm talking about. If this behavior, hey, this is what's gonna happen. And call Mr. Fox, tell him, and say, okay. Our kid will stop, he can chair, you know, it's just silly things that you do.
That's all I have for that.
All right. And we'll move on to item seven, the program and budget information.
So one of the things we talked about this summer was, we know the board, the budget committee have dealt with a lot of different options since the last couple of years, and there are probably parts of the budget that, I don't know, I want to say that board members and budget members don't understand, but could be good to find more details about it. So on this first page, I outline the areas that will, the second part is details of the budget items and within the chart. And then the, the other thing is that areas to review, so tonight we're just gonna review four title funds. That's it, that's all we have for title funds. And then we're gonna review the rest of these, but board, and then I'll just gauge how many we do in each board, or board meeting, but if we have more they want to add, we can add. But we will do this every, hopefully every study session. So I want to get, I think title funds is, is an area that we need to discuss, so if we go to the chart itself. So I broke these down into what the budget area was, like, first one is Title I. A, it said the amount we received this year, this is description. The number of T didn't get in there, but it's okay. The number of students impacted.
Eight point five.
Eight point five? For Title I, that means this funds eight point five positions in the district. And then how does the funding come to the district? It's a federal, all these are federal, and then how valuable is? I want to start with like, it's just, I think that is all of our title programs. So Stephanie, do you want to just give a brief description of what Title I is?
Title I is for, for students and families. B, B is all, I think, I think we've already mentioned that. But for reading special system, that's not a whole, intervention system. And then we have a little bit, a satisfied that we use for that family, usually, a little year's, I guess, that are part of Aster.
These are federal, so they come from the federal government, and how reliable are these? I, I think I answered this the same, which one of those? At this point, all federal funds are not reliable. And, and potentially could change from month to month. And I'll explain that a little bit at the end, based on some things that many of I have been dealing with for the past eight months on this, so. Title, Title I Z?
Title I Z is migrant education, and we're part of a consortium because we don't get a lot of behavior every certain amount. You just underestimate, we're not a consortium. And so basically, our summer school program before this year with the summer running grant has always been funded by the migrant benefit grant. And then they do other programs, like next week they're doing a parent program at Aster where they have all the families come in, and all the times they'll provide dinner and just let them know about the stores that are available. We don't have a very large migrant population in our district, and it's around all these students, but this is specifically charted into homeless families.
Well, then Title II A, which I will note on that chart, I had Stephanie and Mindy at the bottom of all times, is actually what we spend our money on. And there's a needs assessment, if you want to explain it, Title II A.
So Title II A was one that we didn't think we were going to get, and then we actually ended up getting it, which was, was great. Title II is really specifically around professional development. And so the main purpose it says is to improving quality and effectiveness of educators, so we spent all of our Title II money on professional development. So specifically, we do, like, our teacher orientation in August. All of our instructing meeting training has been coming out of Title II. The training that our instructing meeting trainers want to partner to take. We do our doing teach Astoria of Title II A program. And any other professional development that we do throughout the year, this year we do the music teacher one, music training. For ELD staff typically goes to the COSA at Time School Conference every year. Any other professional development, if there's something that we can provide, probably for, or subs for, I think that that's what we do.
And then our last one.
And Title IV is called the Sweet Support of Academic Enrichment Grants. And it's basically around like providing a well-rounded education. So this one, we have a little more flexibility in how we present. A lot of the money from Title IV goes to support our municipal partners in the district. So we use it for Flashlight 360, which is a program that helps them with their speaking and writing, which is the more difficult part of English, because it's a producing language. It also pays for our elevation platform, which is like our data management for our ELD students. IXL Math Licenses, it's just a library that helps students with their math apps and practicing skills. We've used it for, for that stone, which is a language development program for room cover students. Last year, we used it to buy some of the STEM tests, which are language tests that students can take to qualify for the state literacy. And so we'll use some of that this year too, if we run out of tests. And then we use it for love or self-control curriculum, that we might need for either our literacy interventions or ELD students. And then we use it this year also for the youth science, which is a program from the CTE program at the Vins School. And then we use it to pay for data consultant that helps with reporting along the days that we're in reform in the district. That's it.
But also the four title areas we receive money. The way it works is that the federal government has the pot of money that they give to the state, and the state gives those four programs out. A lot of this is based on our poverty level, most all of them are on poverty level. Think it's important to bring this tonight because, like, what Stephanie has said, we were told in March and April last year, we were not gonna receive Title II A. That all of a sudden, there's ninety thousand followers sitting there. And it's, it was like that, we didn't think we were gonna receive Title IV. The one that concerns me more than anyone is Title I, because that's eight and a half staff members. But I can tell you, like, and I think it's the truth for Mindy, but I'll go years before a superintendent, I'll go months, even years, without having a conversation around title. The big question mark is, are they gonna cut 5% or not? This year, every meeting, weekly meetings I have with COSA, is, do we know we're gonna have title funds next month or not? And that's better money, because that's just sort of where they're at. For us, we got Title II A, we got an additional, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars in Title I. I think I shared information with the board this summer about why, I got the permission back from the state as to why we received additional money. Has to do with the way they check the poverty rates right now. So I just want to, you know, when other superintendents say they got Plan B and C, if something happens next month, for their title funds, like that. So I don't have a plan B or C, because it's hard to fund it and have the staff members. But our federal funds are concerned whether it's this year or the years to come. So I know districts that are, one in particular, that have a different funding formula, that they just put the money away and think, hey, the title is gonna go away sometime, they need to go overfund it. We don't have that much here right now. We would have to look at things differently. But that's how, that's the four title funds we have. So is that sort of what you're looking for, like from a chart? I'll bring three or four next month, based on, although I think it hurts, but I think it was good to be true. Spend those for Mindy and I, well, this summer is pretty nervous, title funds. Well, we've told Stephanie, I thought we were, like Mark said, you know, getting Title II A, so like August comes back, there it is.
She went on vacation, then she back, oh, look.
But it's that inconsistent. So, and it's not, I'm not frustrated with the state, I think they're doing the best they can. Not a lot of communication comes down with the federal government right now, especially around education. I know, you're gonna stand, like, OSBA has spent a lot of time, their lobbyists have spent a lot of time on federal funds and their lobbying efforts. And I don't know if they communicate that with you, but I've been in meetings where they're at the table.
All right. So at six fifty-two, with that, we will end our board meeting session, we can turn back at seven for a regular board meeting.